21. We're recording this and we'll move to Ms. Solano for city updates.
Good evening, Chairman ALF City Council and Mayor. The city updates this evening and we have some guests with us from Results for America. The city was selected to participate some months ago in the Bloomberg philanthropies underwritten Cities Budgeting for Equity and Recovery in work coming out of COVID. We've been fortunate enough to work with some, a great technical assistance companies throughout the country and we have a brief narrative and update from them today. I'd like to introduce you to Anjali Chinani, I have to pronounce it correctly. She is a senior advisor for Cities Budgeting for Equity and Recovery in What Works Cities and Results for America and she's joining us on Zoom this evening. And Anjali, may I turn it over to you?
Yes, thank you Laura. And good afternoon, City Council members and staff. My name is Anjali Chinani and I'm a senior advisor, as Laura said, of Results for America, leading the City Budgeting for Equity and Recovery program. It's truly a privilege to be here. Prior to this role, I spent 15 years in Philadelphia local government, 10 as a city council staffer, and five as the mayor's director of policy. And so I know firsthand how hard each of you work and I want to thank you for that, for all the work that you do on behalf of the residents of Pueblo, especially during this very difficult time in the pandemic. It's an honor and a privilege to be here tonight to talk to you about this body of work and I'm joined by Eric Fabian, CEO and co-founder of Resource Exploration, the technical assistance provider that's been working with the city of Pueblo in the City Budgeting for Equity and Recovery program. Eric, would you like to address the council before we get started?
Thank you, Anjali, I will briefly. Good evening, council and staff and others who may be attending. Resource X is a Denver-based organization that partners with local governments to better align resources with the outcomes the city intends to achieve for the benefit of residents in the community at large. It's been a pleasure and an honor to participate in this Bloomberg and Results for America initiative on behalf of cities. And it's been a special honor to work with the city of Pueblo, a city in our home state and a city that's clearly committed to advancing equity, achieving fiscal sustainability as they emerge from COVID and bounce back from the challenges we've all faced. So, thank you for having me here tonight and I look forward to co-presenting.
Thanks, Eric. I believe there's a set of slides that we've shared that, I believe, yeah, great, thank you. Perfect, and next slide please. So, just a brief context about Results for America. We are an organization that works at the federal, state, and local level with government officials and lawmakers, really to advance how data and evidence is being used to solve the most common challenges that we're seeing in cities across the US. RFA has developed standards of excellence and how to further invest in what we know is working and it has been proven to work. We support policymakers and I was a local government fellow in Philadelphia, so I know this on a very personal level, and they are committed to building champions who are committed to using data to drive action that benefits taxpayers and residents in cities. What Works Cities is the local arm of RFA and the City Budgeting for Equity and Recovery program is one initiative that's supporting US cities in using data and evidence to advance equity in the budgeting process. There's a number of other programs and initiatives, but I invite you to visit resultsforamerica.org to learn more about that work. Next slide please. Results for America is shifting impact. So, these are a list of programs, certainly not all of our programs, but again, What Works Cities is that local arm and that's what we're focused on this evening. Next slide please. Results for America has worked to shift over $8 billion in federal funds towards evidence-based programs. We have an economic mobility catalog that I encourage you to look at, key evidence-based programs that we know are proven to work. And we have a network of over 260 cities and counties in the US that we work with to build their capacity and how to use data and evidence. We're also working on a bipartisan coalition towards advancing what works and making that the new normal. I'm incredibly proud to represent Results for America this evening and tell you more about what we've accomplished with the city of Pueblo. Next slide please. Since October of 2020, we've been engaging 28 cities to learn from other budget and finance directors, so we're specifically engaging mostly budget and finance, but of course are so happy to have Laura a part of this program too, to solve with a network of peers. So, it's really been about identifying a key budgetary challenge and then receiving implementation support to advance equity in that important budgetary goal. Next slide please. The 28 cities are mostly small to mid-sized cities with the exception of Philadelphia. And next slide please. We have five learning goals in our program which are really focused on helping cities make financial decisions with an equity lens as it relates to revenues, expenditures, new approaches to fiscal administration and investments. And then we've had five technical assistance partners, you just met Eric from Resource X, but also the Government Finance Officers Association, the Harvard Government Performance Lab, the Public Financial Management, known as the PFM Group, and then HRNA Advisors. One of the most exciting aspects of our program is we're creating a public good strategy. If you'll go to the next slide please. This is a series of blogs, tools, and resources that are capturing the insights of this program, how this work is being done, how decisions are being made with an equity lens, so that other cities that are not participating will be able to utilize these tools and resources. I've included the Medium website page at the bottom of this slide and encourage you to visit that as we continue to develop tools and resources in this program through December. I'd like to turn it to Eric to speak on how Pueblo has incorporated equity. I know you're all familiar with the framework, so we won't spend too much time on it, but I think it's important to talk briefly about the how. Next slide please.
All right, thank you. As you all know, the city of Pueblo was extremely ambitious in this program and had several goals, one of which was to define equity. On behalf of the city, one was to initiate a budgeting for equity initiative which we supported the city. Another was a turn the curve initiative, as you're familiar with, focusing on affordable housing. But the city didn't stop there, they found another opportunity to leverage some expertise and wanted to apply a scoring matrix to the work that the city was doing to evaluate opportunities to take advantage of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And so, we worked with Laura Solano and her team with the mayor's support and additional staff to create a custom scoring matrix to evaluate the proposals that the city developed, both internally and with public support. And we created this to achieve several goals, some of which were, we wanted a consistent evaluation tool to evaluate all the proposals that the city was considering. And we also wanted to create transparency in how these proposals were evaluated. So, as you can see and what you're familiar with, this custom scoring matrix has multiple categories with unique custom Pueblo-specific metrics to evaluate whether the proposal met basic eligibility requirements, what the cost was. Of course, equity was in the center of this evaluation and you can read the rest. But this tool was utilized to evaluate the proposals and start moving towards prioritizing these proposals in relation to the seven pillars that the city has created. Next slide please. So, as I mentioned, one of the overarching goals of the city's participation in the SEABR initiative was a budgeting for equity initiative. And we supported the city in translating the budget from a line item to a program, to a program budget approach. And the intent of that is to better understand the programs, the activities that the city provides the community, and from that perspective, be able to align those programs with equity and the overarching goals that the city is intending to achieve. The city worked to identify over 500 programs, costed each of those programs, and that means allocating budget line items from an FTE, a personnel and non-personnel perspective, and then scored each of those programs against outcomes, one of which was an equity outcome. The culmination of this work was facilitated in-site workshops where Laura, her team, and participants from over 20 departments across the city evaluated these programs and looked for opportunities across nine outcome areas. As you can see, some of them are program efficiencies, some are achieving equity, some were partnership opportunities, some were revenue generation opportunities. We evaluated programs to look for ways to deliver programs differently that would achieve better alignment with the outcomes the city wanted to achieve. 67 well-defined recommendations were identified. Of those, 11 were associated directly with equity, over half or approximately half. 33 of the 67 defined recommendations were identified as low complexity, short timeframe to implement, meaning that they're highly actionable, able to take advantage of and implement in the very near future. And if they can't be implemented soon, they'll be prime opportunities as the city looks to their next annual budget development approach. Next slide please, and Anjali.
Thank you, Eric. And you know, I think one of the key takeaways here is how phenomenal this work is because the city of Pueblo is fundamentally changing how you are making some of the most important resource allocation decisions. And not only do we recognize that is a change for Pueblo and it's advancing how Pueblo is operationalizing equity, but there are 28 other, 27 other cities in this program that are learning from you. And that is so meaningful because, you know, we've all found ourselves in this pandemic not knowing what our next move is. And particularly for leaders like you, you're on the hook for resident outcomes and for making the right choices. And we are so pleased and happy to be able to support that process, that learning process. And I can tell you that, you know, Laura has presented this work in front of the other 28 cities and they are eager to create their own matrices and use yours as an example to move their work forward. And so, I think it's been just a pleasure to work with Laura and Shelley and the team and really to be here this evening to wish you congratulations and to thank you for your commitment and your dedication. The scoring metric, matrix represents the standards of excellence that we work so hard to promote and to work with cities and state and federal government to promote. And so, we wish you so much success in your continued journey to advance equity and budgeting and we welcome questions and just thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you, Anjali, and I only have a couple of other comments to add. Last fall, when the city was selected to participate, there was a finance director. And so, Charles participated from October, November through March in his retirement. And in March, we regrouped with the group and the mayor asked the question, does the city of Pueblo need to bow out? Because clearly, this is not work that we can do to develop the 2022 budget. And you know, with the technical advisors and the assistance of these incredible work agencies, it's like, well, no, let's take a slow track. This is important work and if we can, in the mindset of our community members and city council and our internal department directors, modify the way that we are to some degree copying a budget from last year and considering new impacts, but instead modified to 20 of them in a room talking about cross-departmental efficiencies was an incredible exercise that I think that the directors could speak to, that is something that we really need to put in place. So, the 2022 budget will be presented standard as it has been, but going forward, we might have a different presentation with respect to the priority-based budgeting from different departments, from public works, police, fire, and on it goes. That concludes the city, my section of the report. And do you have any questions for Anjali or Eric or myself?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Questions, comments? Counselor Flores?
Anjali, she's still on the line?
She is.
Okay.
Yeah.
You started your presentation with the importance of data. And one of the things that I've been working on is a program through the CU, Colorado University Leeds Business School, in which the city of Boulder, Fort Collins, I believe it's El Paso County, they have created dashboards of information that these cities can't live without anymore in making decisions. How important is it to our city that we proceed with this business department and producing our own dashboard of information that will lead us to better decision-making and the allocation of funds?
Thank you for that question and I will answer and then see if Eric has additional thoughts to add. I think dashboards allow for transparency and accountability. They certainly are, require funding and expertise and capacity from the city to stand up. And so, I think in some cases, cities are prioritizing the implementation of a program, the delivery of service, which is obviously the priority in how we use taxpayer dollars. However, I think if and when you can partner with other organizations, funders, and invest in yourself and in the government and that kind of infrastructure, it's absolutely a benefit. You know, obviously, you need to think about keeping it updated, you know, a tool like that, that isn't updated regularly, isn't of a benefit. And so, I think it needs to be thought of in that way as well. But, you know, personally, I think it's a great tool.
Ironically, it doesn't, a dashboard or data like this doesn't qualify for ARPA, which is really strange to me. You would think that the ARPA money would be better spent if they would also authorize something like a dashboard for cities so that they can actually allocate the money efficiently and make better decisions for their cities. Thank you for responding to my question.
Thank you.
Anybody else, comments? Counselor Winner?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Dennis, I actually had that down in my notes today to ask about those analytics that provided various demographics and quantitative issues. And I thought we all agreed that we were going to move forward. So, I was going to bring that up after work session, wanting to know where that was.
You know, we were told that it doesn't qualify for ARPA, but we are in the middle of a budget process. So, at some point, I would like to introduce that as either an ordinance or included in the mayor's budget. So, I'll be discussing that in more detail when we get to the budget area.
All right. I don't think it would be wrong to use Petco money for that either. I mean, they really need it.
I don't know about the money, but you're right, we all need it here in the city. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you very much for the report. Ms. Solano, are you done? Thank you. We'll move on to number two on the agenda, which is the Pueblo Means Business Update. Commissioner Ortiz?
Well, good evening. Thank you, members of council. Thank you, mayor and the city. I appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief update, if I can, on the Pueblo Means Business Task Force. I don't know if that PowerPoint is up. Also want to thank all the city staff that I see here that have been working so hard on this project throughout and Councilman ALF for his leadership on the city side as well. Thank you, everyone, for your assistance thus far. I'm here tonight to just give you basically an update on where we are. I feel the project is really at an impasse of sorts. We've made it incredibly far and I'll show you some of that progress here tonight, but I think this is the last leg of the sprint uphill, if you will, and it's going to take everyone's support to make that happen. You can see from the title of this presentation, and I'm going to try to move quickly so that I can handle any questions that you all may have, permitting our way to growth. And the reason the presentation is titled as such is when we look at all of the economic development projects, whether they be commercial or residential, all of the work that Petco and other entities, PURA, the chambers of commerce that everybody puts in, the one thing that they have in common, regardless of how and where they originate, is they all go through the front door of business permitting in the city and county of Pueblo. And so, if we can get more efficient and be the best in the state of Colorado when it comes to business permitting, that is a huge advantage when it comes to capitalizing on being one of the fastest-growing states in the country. If you look here on the left, we often talk as elected officials about the need for more residential or more affordable housing. We talk about revitalizing our downtown with core and character. And we also look at jobs. We talk about jobs till we're blue in the face sometimes. But when it comes down to it, we are succeeding in some areas, but in other measures, we're not getting there. We're not making it across the finish line. So, that's what this project is looking to do. We want to have simple and concrete processes. We understand that city and county and Pueblo West Metro, we all have our own unique processes. And I think there are some folks that work very hard at business permitting and that really do care about the city and county of Pueblo. They care about safety when they permit some of these projects, but just because you have an efficient silo does not mean that these systems or these silos are working well together. And that is usually the holdup, is the coordination amongst various business permitting entities. This is who is on the task force. We have a couple of members that have joined since. You can see city, county entities, metro members, contractors, business owners, folks from the investment, Realtor community, contractors. If there's somebody that you would like to see or think can really contribute to this task force, please let me know and we'd be happy to add them to the group. This has been our approach. We've been at this for quite a while, as you can see, since October formally of last year. We have gone through this in a really methodical fashion. I've always said that you can identify an issue in permitting and simply change one policy or one rule, but it will only solve that issue one time. To fix this and fix this for good, we had to really go into the weeds, look at process, do some business process mapping from beginning to end, identify bottlenecks and clean the system up. And right now, we are at the build and implement stage and I'll go into a little bit more detail of what next steps are here in a minute. This is an example of the work that's taken place thus far. This is an example of a process flow for multifamily development that normally took, previously took 180 days. And this sort of stuff takes a long time to dig into, to get into the details and weeds, and it's now been shortened to 120 days. And so, I think this is an example of where time is money. When people have loans out there, every month that goes by is interest that's paid to a bank and also lessens the chance that somebody's going to move forward with a project. So, these are some of the small, but I would say mighty victories that we've had thus far. And I also want to recognize, and I'm sorry I couldn't see our consulting team up there and Brian Poole, Greg Belomo and others, thank you for being on the feed and Councilwoman Solange McCullough-Bachichia, thank you. But I will say that this sort of work throughout all the various permitting processes has taken a tremendous amount of work and we're making progress. Now, we need to fold these individual and revised processes into a singular piece of software. This is another example of what things can look like in previous state and in current state as they move through various agencies. This slide is really important. If I could tell you what is the most important deliverable of Pueblo Means Business, there are two deliverables. One is to have on the right, a one-stop physical shop where you have a representative from every single business permitting entity, whether it be in the city or the county of Pueblo, that can help move a project forward. How often have we sent folks between offices bouncing from a utility company to city government to county government to Pueblo West, trying to find an answer? If we have somebody, not entire departments, but if we have a representative staffing this location that can break out into a breakout room and answer questions or get past an issue, that's exactly what we're going for. You can see there on the right of the wall that there will be logos from every entity that's represented. This includes utility companies as well. On the left side is the second deliverable. This is the single open gov portal. If I would have told you a year ago when we started this project that I think we can find a space in downtown Pueblo that is large enough to accommodate all of the business permitting entities that happens to be across the street from the regional building authority and centrally located, you'd probably tell me I was crazy. Well, we have that space. And not only do we have that space, but we have Regional Building Authority who has stepped up and donated a million dollars out of their reserves to help the county remodel this space. And we are getting cooperation that once we are done at the end of this year to staff this space for our customers, the people of Pueblo. When you look here at the business portal, imagine if anywhere in the country that you could initiate a building permit process for a residential or commercial project and whether it be in the city or county of Pueblo or the Pueblo West Metro District, that it's initiated from a singular site, that when you pull up a parcel in a county-wide system, that it tells you whether it's in a TIF district, whether there are development tools to help you. And imagine having a single set of standards and expectations right off the bat for your project that does not change and a way to contact somebody if you have issues. That's what we're going for here. And I can tell you this with confidence, when you look at the one-stop virtual shop and the one-stop physical shop, there is no other city and county in the country that is doing this like this. If I would have also told you that the city of Pueblo, the county of Pueblo, the Pueblo West Metro District in Pueblo and the Regional Building Authority are all going to choose the same ERP vendor for business permitting and choose to update business permitting modules at the exact same time with the same vendor, you would think I was crazy as well. We have made it that far. We have, we are right on the cusp of realizing this vision. This is a little more detail of what collaboration and action will look like. We haven't quite named this center, we'd certainly love to take suggestions, but the idea is that you have groupings of similar processes, whether it be utilities or fire or other things that are grouped together in the best interest of the customer. This is where we are in terms of the one-stop physical shop. We are currently doing, we are getting construction-ready documents so that next year, when our anchor tenant on the first floor moves out, we are ready to go to construction. Like I said, with a lot of the money from Regional Building Authority and the county will certainly kick in the rest to ensure that this gets done by 2022. You can see here that the open gov portal is a big part of this project. This piece, and I would look to the IT folks, we had a task force meeting this morning. This is not easy stuff. This is going to take a lot of considerations when it comes to funding, when it comes to security, and when it comes to just flat-out collaboration to make the one-stop portal come to fruition. This is an overview of the ERP architecture of what this would look like. I think that perhaps this next map is the most illustrative. When you look here, and I've, in my previous life, I did, I've led many ERP, many IT-based solutions like this. This is no easy task. I know that this is certainly ambitious. You can see three instances here. You can see the city of Pueblo, the county of Pueblo, Pueblo West Metro. We are working with the Regional Building Authority there on the bottom. If you look at this rectangle here in blue, I think we're almost there. In an ideal world, the Regional Building Authority would also be in this blue circle here as well. Really doesn't quite make sense, the city, county, and Pueblo West Metro would all be on the same system, but we would have to work around the Regional Building Authority. But we would have to work around the Regional Building Authority. They need to be on open gov. If we cannot get there, then we will have to work around them to realize this vision. But we're not going to stop whatever, whatever it takes by any means necessary. I want to thank Lori who actually constructed this architecture. But this shows ultimately underneath the hood what this will look like. And this is, this is wonderful work, but this is exactly where we're going. These are some of the, this is again charted on the open gov next steps. The city, I just want to say has done a wonderful job. They're going to be the first to go live on open gov. So we'll certainly learn a lot from your successes and from your challenges. So congratulations on your go-live date coming up here very soon. I'm going to skip this last slide here because this work, and you can see here there are various project roles on the task force. This work will only come to materialize with leadership from the elected officials. This is, this is tough work. We are quote-unquote moving everybody's cheese. We are changing everybody's world. But this can really put the city and county of Pueblo on the map when it comes to economic development. If we can galvanize, bring together the support and keep this momentum moving forward. With that, I moved pretty quickly, but I know that you have another couple of things coming up on the agenda and I wanted to ensure I had some time to take any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions, comments, Councilor Schilling?
Garrison, you always amaze me. So what I saw in the graph was the bottleneck is regional building on open gov?
You know, I, I would say there's, there's a couple of challenges. I, I think getting, yes, getting Regional Building Authority to sign an agreement with open gov would, would be a huge victory and a step in the right direction. Yes.
And so how do we accomplish that? What's their holdup? Why would they not want to participate?
To be frank, I think we've spent a lot of time investigating what their underlying systems are. I said, I'm not an expert in what, in how their systems work and how everything functions. Are we comparing apples to apples or apples to oranges? The, the fact is, after we've looked into it, we can put one system over the other, but that makes no sense. The city, county, and Pueblo West are all replacing their older legacy systems. Regional building should as well. If they do not come along and get on board, then we're going to keep marching forward.
Okay, let me be more direct. Is it a case of can't or I don't want to?
I, I, I think that's a lack of, I'll just be as frank as I can because this is, this is a big deal. It's a lack of desire.
Lack of desire?
Correct.
And so how do we change that lack of desire?
You know, I, I think as city and county leadership comes together, when we look at city, county entities, I, I think it's a, a single direction, a, a single drum.
That's kind of an answer, but you're, that's a tough question.
You know, it, it could be a resolution that we pass. I, I'm not exactly sure, but I do think that getting everybody on the same system is, is quite important. And the fact that the city and the county are is a major victory.
Does it have any weight for the city and county prepare a resolution or is it saying you should do this and they can still say I don't want to? I mean, how much power does a resolution have, Dan?
When you created the Regional Building Authority years ago, you made them independent.
Okay.
And so your only power is the power of appointment. And I guess if push comes to shove, you can change the regional building board by appointing new members.
And for all of you who may not know this, council did that once before with the library. So it's not unheard of to do that sort of thing. I don't know why on earth they would want to fight with us, but we do have the authority to do something.
And, and I do want to just be sure that I mentioned that, you know, they have been very engaged with the project. They have made themselves and their staff readily available for all meetings. They gave us a million dollars out of reserves towards the one-stop physical shop, which is much appreciated. But sometimes to get the final step of the way on a, on a monumental project like this, I, I think it's just knowing that this is the vision of the city and the county and this is how we expect things to move.
Well, the mayor's got something, but I think I don't want is completely unacceptable.
Well, let me, let me try to put this in perspective if I can. Regional building has been maybe a decade ahead of the city and county in terms of an online program. So they've developed their own online permitting program. And they are comfortable with it. The people they deal with are comfortable with it. What we've been working on for the last 24 months, I'd say, with open gov is coordinating the, the city's program with regional buildings program to see if we can get them to line up so that they work together. That's what we're going to go live on in, on the 12th of October, we're supposed to go live. And we'll have a lot better idea after that, I think, about, you know, does it work when you have two systems that are maybe not identical, but can communicate with each other and work together? So that's what we're working through at this point. And we'll
My big concern is still what Garrison said, lack of will. So work that one out too.
Well, Councilor Atencio is our representative on regional building.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I would say it's the lack of will. They spent a lot of money to do their computer programs. And they, like the mayor said, they're pretty comfortable in what they're doing. All, all the developers and the construction people in town are used to that system. Again, they spent a lot of money. And it's only been in the last couple of years, two or three years, since I've only been on council two years. And that's when they, they really implemented that, that system. So, so I think it's just they're hesitant in going about businesses spending even more money than they spent already.
Councilor Winner?
So Mr. Kogosik might be able to help me with this, but a few years ago we checked into this. And this is an IGA between the city and the county. And we can, we can adjust that IGA with the six-months notice. So we can say six months out that we don't want to renew that contract unless
You know, I, I just would like to kind of add and frame, you know, the discussion. I, I didn't want to speak too soon and say, look, regional billing has a great system. It's the same thing. It's, it's not. It, it's an entirely different system that is decades outdated. They've made improvements. They've overhauled, but when you look at the software platform, it is not, it is not brand new. I don't want to point the finger at, at regional. I really don't because we're going to need their cooperation to move forward. But it's just kind of the same old thing when you get so far and there's always one squeaky wheel. And, you know, we'll do our darndest to, to bring the whole vision to fruition. But ultimately there are workarounds and we'll work around until the vision is realized. But it, it will take further cooperation.
So you don't like my suggestion?
You know, I
You can give a six-month notice right now.
You know, I, I, like I said, we'll need
You just need will.
A great amount of collaboration to still move forward.
Okay. And then also Laura Solano had given a presentation on that. She said it was an issue of dollars and firewalls when it came to payment. So it doesn't sound like it will be compatible.
You, you know, there's, there's always challenges. I, I mean, there's going to be challenges with getting people in one physical space and who has, who's closest to the breakout room, who has this, who has that, what color are the walls? I mean, you know, there's, there's challenges with everything and there's certainly challenges when you're trying to create a model, like I said, that is going to be one of the best in the country, but, but you have to try. And we'll do our best. My guess is that we'll get, we'll have a good portion of the vision realized, but we're, we're going to keep marching forward.
Any other questions, comments? Ten, Councilor Atencio?
Can we as the city and county incentivize regional building and help them change over?
I
I mean, I'm just trying to
Sure.
I don't mean that kind of incentive.
Yeah, I mean, to your, to your point, if cost is an issue, you know, I, I can't speak without running things before, you know, everybody in the room or the entire VOCC, but I, I don't think money should be an issue when it comes to the return on investment that this system will deliver for our community for sales tax and a property tax perspective.
Councilor Brown?
I just want to thank you, Garrison, for all your work on this. It looks to be an uphill battle, but I think with your leadership, hopefully you can get it done.
Thank you. We, we have a good team.
You know, the vision, the vision has always been that we could move this as, we didn't think we could do it at first, but now we're at the point where we know we can move everybody towards this vision. And it is very discouraging that, that regional building does not want to be a part of that. And I think that through, through support from city council and, and, and maybe it is just as simple as a resolution saying that we support the Pueblo means, the Pueblo means business vision. And we believe that all entities should be involved and, and as supportive. And, you know, usually the first step should be very nice and ask, you know, that, that this should happen. Not that we haven't already done that, but maybe if we have a unanimous council that wants to move forward, we could get something to happen. But it's critical. It's critical to the success of this program as far as I'm concerned. Would you agree?
Absolutely. And I, I would like to think that my approach is, is, is soft and, you know, collaborative. But yeah, sometimes it, it, it takes entities coming together to really push. But I, I just want to be sure in, in closing, I really appreciate your time. I, we've worked very well on this project together, the city and the county, all the entities involved. Your staff has put in a tremendous amount of time. So really appreciate Scott, Lori and, and others, Laura, others that have stepped up. So appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we'll go to number three on the agenda, which is no one hears unless you scream suicide prevention play. And we have Roxanne, Kennedy, Taylor, and Heather. Roxy, I know you're the lead. Great to see you.
Thank you, Chairman Aliff, councilperson, Mayor, Ms. Solano, and others. I would like to start this presentation with an excerpt from the play that the entire play is written by children, teenagers from around the country, performed by children, teenagers. And this particular excerpt is written and performed by Breckin Gray, who is in our company. And let's see, is this a good spot right here? And I'm allowed to tell you the student has been vaccinated. It wouldn't be a performance without tech difficulties. It just, it just wouldn't. We, we live in this world. She's used to it.
Especially like
Breckin, I'm going to turn this around. I don't think it'll go to
I promised myself it would never come to this. I promised everyone it would never come to this. Everyone said it'd be the lack of food that killed me. Would have been me killing myself either way. I never really understood that till now. That the reason I didn't eat was because I wanted to disappear, not to fit the beauty standard. Of course, fitting the beauty standard was part of it, but it was the shrinking myself, the control. That's what mattered. It was just one thing after another. I tried so hard to get better. I tried so hard to survive. But it was the party, the anorexia, the constant anxiety attacks. And then COVID hit. And I was there was nothing to distract myself with and no jokes to cry. It was real and it was there. Everything all at once. There were no more walls of this perfect dancer who everyone loved with a pretty face, tiny waist, the perfect grades. And if everyone loved me, why did no one help me that night? The party at Austin's house midsummer. Everyone saw Nick Taylor take me up to the guest bedroom and no one did anything. They said I probably enjoyed it because hey, Nick Taylor is hot and who wouldn't want to get with him? So now I'm here. A shell of a person who's tired of fighting. I'm tired of fighting for people who never fought them. And I know I have people who truly care about me. But at the end of the day, we can only save ourselves. I can't save myself when there's nothing left of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Breckin. I'd like to introduce my partner, Kennedy Pugh. We've done a number of projects together. Taylor Gilman, who is the drama teacher at the academy. And I do have a slideshow and thank you for bringing it up. No One Hears Unless You Scream is a play about suicide prevention. Several years ago, we wanted to do a piece at the Arts Academy that would engage students in social justice work. At the peak of our work was a number of mass school shootings. And our board, school board in District 7, he was very supportive that we do the work and talk about the work. But we came to understand that school shootings are suicide attempts done by individuals who do not want to go along. A lot of research in this. And so we came to the board and said, what we're seeing more and more of is teen suicide. Slide? Oh, here you go. Thank you. The rate of teen suicide in Colorado increased by 58% in three years, making it the cause of one in five adolescent deaths. It has always been extremely difficult for us to bring this work to the fore, to discuss it, to plan for presentations because inevitably the apprehension of thinking, am I, are we bringing up a taboo that we shouldn't talk about? Our other partner that is not here tonight, Heather Pelser from Health Solutions, who works in teen suicide, has been our guiding factor along with the work that we've done theatrically and with the school psychologists in the schools has confirmed for us over the years, the critical nature that we do have to talk about it. The play. So slide. There's some pictures of past productions. The first production we did was about four, five years The first production we did was about four, five years ago at County High for all of the students there. We always have a number of school psychologists at the performance. Parents have the opportunity to off children out if they choose. And then at the end of the piece, the artists, the teen artists in the play talk to the audience. They begin the dialogue. Any child who wishes to go in anonymity to a room with a therapist to begin a process, to see if they need assessment or simply to talk is there and it's done through an app. And so that is always in place so that there is protection for something that is pretty overwhelming to watch. The piece itself is about 40 minutes. It is a series of vignettes that deal with all those issues that pressure children. From coming out being gay or lesbian, transgender, pressure from parents on grades, bullying in the school. There's a number of issues that are covered. And we have actually done rewrites and included the COVID pressure, other aspects that kids have said, now there's this. So that the voice is authentic from the kids. The play is not about blame, but rather how do we identify a teen in need and where do we get them help? The conversation has to begin and find a place in our schools for kids to get help without stigma. And they can be in that peer-to-peer communication. We know that once a child or a person has taken their life, I think we are doing more and more and more in this community. I honor and salute Health Solutions. We are able to help people through it, but it is that proactive opportunity that we know for kids, they want to talk together. This is something that they share and trust as a peer group. Our piece, which we have also performed for Rye High, that has a community that has lost children. We have performed for the community with the Pillars Group that had it done for a number of people in the community and other teachers. We have performed it for community members, council members, District 60, District 70, boys, girls, all of those individuals who serve in our community leadership. Ms. Solano was there, Council Manitensio was there. There are many people in the community that have seen it because it's imperative that as adults, you understand what the kids are saying, what they've written and how they're talking to each other. That has resulted in the next week, we will present for District 60 leadership. Superintendent McAluso wants it done for all of her leadership and her buildings so that they can begin the conversation. There's a lot of recent training we've been given as adults in suicide prevention. But this is a piece that has such an authentic voice for kids and now it's, and it'll be moving into all these various venues. The piece, our production has 25 actors and technicians. They run it all. They run the music, they run the sound, they are the performers. The show is directed by Taylor Gilman, produced by myself and Kennedy Pugh, who is the founder of our partner, Creative Art and Artists. And we're here to request some funding. We are, we have been funded by Health Solutions. We have been funded by 70. We'll get some funding from 60. There are a number of organizations. We'll continue to go to the goal, the end game. And we're very proud of our community in that we are not going to take backseat on this issue. Pueblo is the frontrunner in bringing this to the stage, to the fore, to children, to community. We would like for all of our kids to see it. There is still a debate. Is middle school ready for it? The middle school teachers say yes. Some educators say no. Many educators say yes. But ultimately, we would like to take it to other districts in the state, teach them how to take it on to create a troupe. We have some districts that have horrific numbers that are reluctant to even have a conversation. And that's not going to help. So typically after each of the productions, I, as I said, we have a talk back. Some of the kids in the play will talk to other kids about their journey with depression, their journey with ideation. And then kids can ask them questions. There, there is always a protection of their HIPAA. There is always a protection of their own identity and their issues. But ultimately, it is what engages other kids to then seek out help immediately. Because on any given moment, there could be a child in peril. So. Slide, I think I already talked about the performances. We did do a survey when we did the performance at El Pueblo. There were 50 people. Over 43 individuals said that the work is appropriate and needs to be done. They will lend their name to endorse the piece. 23 agreed to support the pursuit of further funding, either through an endorsement or connection to grants or funding sources. It was, you never know. You never know who's going to tell you this too much, but we don't ever hear that. There are phases that we have created in the funding. And I've outlined it for you, that goes through workshops with costs. A lot of the costs that we have is in transportation and moving equipment, but also in feeding this many kids. They go all day long in school. And what we don't want them to do is go through a process that's very taxing emotionally and physically and be in a food desert. So we're, you know, and we, and we ensure that we are feeding them as we're transporting them and, and taking all of the equipment. And so that'll be, we will present in the middle of October, another community presentation at the El Pueblo Museum so that others in our community can see it, be cognizant, hopefully say, yes, let's do this play here, or let's have my school learn to do it. Phase three will be the development, our full-blown production. The production we do now is what is known as like a reader's theater, where the actors know their lines, but it comes across almost like they're doing a, a presentation of reading the play. But when we do full production, there's much more movement and intensity. And then phase four is where we will take it on various tours. I was invited to come and ask for some funding from Councilperson Atencio. But I stretched, you know, me, I always ask for more. You guys are used to that. So we're asking you for some funding. Did you get the last slide? And we feel that we are unfortunately, sadly, and Heather is not here tonight because she's counseling a family who just lost a child in the past few days. We have to do this work and it is probably inappropriate to say I'm proud of us that we're doing it. But I'm, I am honored to be a part of a community that is not afraid to take this on and try to save our kids. And if you have questions, please ask any of us, Ms. Kennedy or Taylor or Breckin.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counsel Atencio.
Yeah, I was privileged to be able to see that presentation at El Pueblo. And man, did it pull at my heartstrings. It's real. It's emotional. Everyone should see it. And I told Roxanne that I would sponsor a resolution to help with some funding. I'm asking that the city council give between $3,000 and $5,000. If somebody would like to say three, if somebody would like to say five, I'll sponsor the resolution. But this play should be taken to every high school in the state. Every kid should see it. And I mean, that's how emotional it is. I'm serious.
Counsel Sheller.
Is somebody going to call me and ask me why we're giving money to the county?
Well, this isn't. No, it's, it's. Yeah. And the kids are from county high school. That's all.
Well, county has a lot of District 60 kids going there.
I just asked a question.
I know.
How am I going to respond? We've never given money outside of the city before that I know of.
Well, go ahead.
It's, it's not giving money outside of the city. It's caring for the kids that are in the city. We, we, this is a service that is available to the city. Because our production is with our kids in District 70, yet as Ms. Winter said, that a lot of our students come from the city. So.
I'm not against what you're doing. I just have, I think it could be named something else to where somebody doesn't call me and say, it says right here, the Arts Academy at Public County High School. Why are you giving money to the county? I'm just asking a question. I'm the only one there. Maybe you're saying it's something. I like the project. And when that young lady got up there, I was, that was amazing. And I would think you would want to have it everywhere. I just don't know that.
She lives in the city.
Doing.
Well, by the way, no, but they, no, thank you, thank you, thank you, Bob. It, it, this is why we're bringing it here and why we took it to El Pueblo and we're performing it for 60. Because we realized we can't, this has to evolve to all, all of the greater region and certainly the rest of the state.
We've also realized that it's bigger than District 70 where, where we start to, where we started to produce it. And it's something that, that needs to be for the whole, all of Public County.
How about the Arts Academy of Pueblo? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
No.
Or we can just run it through.
Yeah, or just Colorado Arts and Artists, which is my company that's in the city.
I just don't. Pueblo County, I don't know if we've ever given anything to the county before. So I'm, I'm just one person and I'm all for it.
Right, right.
I just would rather see another name than the Pueblo County High.
That's, that's us keeping. We can definitely do that because we do have, we have, we actually have 1,800 kids from the city who go to school in the county. But irregardless, this will open up to more children in the city to be in these productions.
What I'm saying is keep me from getting yelled at, okay?
No, 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 I get it. I get it.
Yeah, I think, I think Pueblo's been the lead on this, thanks to you. So just to bring more awareness as much as we can with the talent of, of your students and training others. I, I think it's really important. As Larry said, you know, it's so emotional. Yeah. So sad.
Counsel Flores. Yeah, all I wanted to say is that, you know, this type of program is so important in our community, especially what's been happening the last years. And I don't know if there's any statistical data that you have some assesses. It's harder, it's hard to know. Because I had a strong relationship with an organization called Pueblo Suicide Prevention Center for years. And they're gone now. And I think it's been taken over by Health Solutions. I just wanted to say that, you know, that I would support your resolution, Larry, if you wanted to make it forward. Give me a number.
Counselor, do you have anything?
No, you know, I've been in and out. I'm not having really good locklet service right now.
Okay, thank you.
So I just caught the end of that. I really didn't get any of it.
Okay, no problem.
Uh, no, I support my career as a firefighter. Unfortunately, I saw several young people commit suicide.
Yeah, what a great program. I can't imagine that we would argue about, and I'm sure we won't. But you know, if you could, if you can stop one kid from Pueblo from, from not killing themselves, how much? Take, get as much money as you want. It's, this, this is a good program, a good worthy program. So I guess they, you mentioned 5,000. Are you good moving forward? You okay with it moving forward? Forward. There you go.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do. My number four on the agenda is the Arkansas Bluffs Development. Mr. Ward.
Thank you for the opportunity to, I think a few people have heard about or perhaps we discussed it informally with a few council members, but we'd like to make the council aware of a project that I think will fit the city's needs and really change the, change the dynamics of downtown and the Mesa Junction. I'm here tonight as the president of a company called Tabex. And we purchased this land. I don't know if, let me see if this. Start with the presentation here. Yeah. So the conserv, the Pueblo Conservancy District, as I'm sure most people know here, owned a great deal of property along the bluff. In March, we were able to acquire this in the group. This outline doesn't, isn't exactly the property that we acquired. It's just a rough outline of what we want to talk about tonight in regard to building a tax increment funded district, a TIF district in order to attract the development money that we need for some of the major projects that we would like to do and have indeed started on one. The first one, and this is a Photoshop version of a structure that's on the bluff there by the new bridge that the city just built. The apartment building that you see there is 100 units. It's got about six commercial properties with a restaurant. And in order to energize the investors, capital equity partners, we would like to see the entire district, pretty much the whole bluff there. And maybe even if the city feels that it should go further down than that outline. We believe that it will change the face of, not, certainly it'll change the face of the bluff. But when you look at the skyline from Forest Street or from the downtown area or I-25, I think you'll notice that there's a tremendous visibility right there. The library is very visible from I-25 because it's a three-story building. The octagon or the, the five, the polygon, I guess it is, that Housing Authority has, is also very visible. So we want to change the face of that, that bluff. It's in its high visibility with the kind of buildings that will impress not just the citizens of Pueblo, but visitors and people who are looking to relocate. You know, we've got cities all over the country with, with workers who are now much freer to live where they want. And Pueblo, as you know, is, because we all live here, it's got a really unique opportunity to attract a large number of those people. Now, if you were coming here from an urban center and you had some pretty good income, where would you, if you happened to come across Pueblo, where would you stay? And where would you look to live? We don't have a lot of mid and upper scale housing, especially in the downtown area. The need for this market is, is pretty substantial. And we know that from our research. In the time that we acquired the property, which was in March till now, we've we've seen tremendous interest in this project. And the first Phase One project, this one, has got tremendous support already. There's no doubt that this could be built. There's, we've already done substantial work on architecture. These units will be, you know, they'll be a little bit, they'll be on the high end. But it'll, it'll change this, which is what we currently have along the bluffs, into a very desirable place to live. That first project has an estimated cost of $24 million. It'd be mid to high-end apartments, which are very short supply. The Clarion Group has, who the city has hired to do work on giving recommendations. on giving recommendations for the growth of Pueblo. Has recommended infill and, and more diverse housing. Uh, this remote working culture is, is going to fuel a lot of demand in Colorado. And in Pueblo needs to, I, I think really needs to encourage this migration to the city. Some of the challenges that we have with the land, we've learned over the six months that we've owned it. It was a hundred years since that land had any other owners in the Conservancy District, so it's a hundred years of vacant land. There's a lack of utilities, a poor state of upkeep. It's the wildest land in Pueblo right now. So we would like to change that. And we didn't buy this property to speculate. We bought it to develop it. And we, we, we bought it to develop it in a grand way. So that's what we're here for, is to is to ask the city for assistance. Maybe a resolution for the Urban Renewal Authority to enter into a TIF District Formation. And that's basically what I'm here for today is to ask you for your support on that TIF and also uh, we'd like to do a planned unit development designation for that entire bluff in two stages. The first, because these take a while, we want to do the first phase as soon as we can. So we can get this building built. Because we do believe that once the building is built, it'll just go like fire down the rest of the bluff. So uh I would love to answer any questions anybody has about this idea.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ward, Mr. or Counselor Flores?
You know, we've had several discussions about this since I serve on the Urban Renewal. And I, I don't see any issue in uh doing that, uh, in fact, that'll be something that I can push forward and start the process, uh, because I think it's a great idea. One thing you didn't mention is that you spent over eight thousand dollars in cleaning up that whole bluff.
Yeah, over ten, actually.
Actually, more, uh, because it was a mess and I, I just wanted to thank you for doing
Make a dent, Dennis, so thank you for acknowledging.
No, but I, you're too humble to say it, but uh, you know, that, that speaks volumes about your, you being a longtime Puebloan and being concerned about that. You could have waited, you could have ignored it, but I think that speaks well of your seriousness about this project. Uh, I can't imagine it not being successful. Some of the best views are from that bluff. Uh, they're incredible views and I think many people would want to live there. So I certainly support your project.
Thank you, Dennis, and I'll, I'll add that we do have every reason to believe that a hundred million dollars would be spent on that bluff in five years, once it gets rolling.
Counselor Atencio.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I've always seen that bluff when you drive down. I don't remember the name of that street from Union Avenue in front of the, uh, the river. That those, it should be developed and I've thought about that for years and, and almost imagined what could be there. But I'm definitely in favor of doing something like that. And I would
I, I'll also add one, one more thing briefly, and that is that the the reason that that bluff has never been developed is there's a tremendous challenge with the, with the slope of that bluff and the uh, lack of the utilities and infrastructure. The protection of the river requirements, the protection of the trail. These all things, these, these do not allow small projects. In other words, you couldn't do a small project because the cost would be so high. So they gotta be big projects.
Uh, Counselor Winter?
Yeah, actually, I was just gonna ask you if that's a surveying nightmare.
Yes.
Have you had, have you that, had that particular property surveyed?
We've had some of the properties surveyed and uh, it'll be six figures before we get the proper survey title work. Land, uh, you know, soil tests, it's very expensive.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a nice project. Um, I've uh owned two houses in Mesa Junction area. And I, I, I just love that area.
Counselor Shellen?
Twenty-five million dollars to build a building?
Correct.
Times seven and a half, it's a nice number. Thank you, that's all I got. I like it.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, Mayor?
Counselor Edith, I just want counsel to know that I support this project a hundred percent. I think it would be a great, uh, great addition to the city of Pueblo. Uh, I've explained to Mr. Ward that we, if council wants to proceed forward, that we can ask Urban Renewal to do that blight study. There's no doubt in my mind that they'll determine it's blighted and we can move forward with the urban renewal area, but I've explained to Mr. Ward that in order to have a TIF associated with that, that all the other taxing entities, uh, the county, the school districts, the water districts, all have to agree that it would be TIFed. Now, they're not getting any money from it now because it's been owned by the Conservancy District. Once Mr. Ward acquired it, they maybe charged some property taxes, but they're probably pretty minimal now, so um, there, it hasn't been a source of income to them, so I wouldn't think they'd object. I think they would benefit from, from the development like we all would.
Direction? Are you okay with moving forward, Larry? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Very much.
Anything else, anything pressing? We're a jerk.